Good evening, welcome to Athens City Council. Tonight is Monday, October 26, 2009. This evening, City Council is going to meet in a series of four committee meetings, starting with the Utilities Committee. Utility Committee Chair Nancy Baines.
Good evening, President and council members. The Utilities Committee has only one item on its agenda. I apologize for not having it listed. The reason is that we've started to meet on Thursdays and it's a little bit hard sometimes to get these things on the agenda. For me, my fault, not Debbie's fault. Debbie's been doing fabulous research for me. Utilities Committee proposes that we appropriate an additional $25,000 each from the water and sewer funds for the purpose of replacing meters. Now, we always put money in the budget for meters because they do go critical after a time. And one of the things that most of the literature says is that after a while, they may run too slow when you're not getting our full amount. If you go a month of water, you'll also be deprived of the sewer fund because that's how we assess sewer charges. So, not only would -- so, we applaud that and we've always funded it. But Andy has a new proposal or has been implementing a different kind of meter. And between the time of leaves and Halloween and the snow, perhaps he can replace some more meters in town. That will mean unfortunately, perhaps some bills will go up because they've been getting too -- a deal on water. But more importantly, much more important than that, and I will say that happened to me maybe two or three years ago where my meter was malfunctioning and my water bill was low. So, it was nice because there were teenagers in my house. Anyway, they figured it out and they replaced it. You can't tell, so it isn't something to call in and say, "Hey, I think my meter needs to be replaced." But the other part of it is the new meters, and I walked up and down the street with my camera and couldn't find one. But the new meters have a little device on them that allows them an IT experience for the meter, and they can read it without pulling the tops off the meters. And so, our current staffing would potentially at least be reduced and we can reprogram that person into the regular work crew. And that's basically what it -- what I have. Now, I have my natural inborn experiential mistrust of IT and anything that resembles a on-the-spot reader. I mean, we've had our rounds with those. But I think that in this case, it's proven itself. We have about 40 percent, isn't that right, Paula, currently engaged? Now, if you'd like to add anything to that or whatever, feel free, but it's something I don't think anybody can argue much with.
Just that particular interest is the high university buildings because of the density down there. What it requires is also getting a high university personnel person to unlock, to allow our person in. So, we're going to free up a lot of --
Okay. That's even better. And, you know, and that wouldn't be construed as negative town gum, I should say. It'd be construed as getting our fair share.
We have these meters that you're talking about. These are the ones with the little black centers on them, so you can just put a stick to it.
I wanted to get a picture and I couldn't find one, I'm sorry.
There, I see a lot of town. I don't know about in a lot of neighborhoods. As I say, 40 percent. This is technology that's been around for quite a few years, which makes it easier for them. I know there's actually newer technology, which is radio frequency. But I've talked to the cities and sometimes they have problems with the radio frequency. In other words, you're pointing it at that and it's really picking up the meter down the block.
Or opening my garage door, right?
Yeah, well, that too, maybe, yes.
Grab walking my phone.
And I'm aware of the -- I know High University has talked to us about some of their large capacity meters, which are older. I think in particular, I think it was Ron Chapman, actually, when they were trying to do that RecycloMania. Part of the component of RecycloMania is actually measuring water consumption. They said it's very difficult to do for our meters because some of the meters are so old in here. And this is for us on the dorm. So, if we really want to, you know, count everything that's being used, we should have new meters. So, you're going to introduce this next week, is that --
Right, and try to fast-track it so you have money. For the time between the snow, when the snow flies and we have to plow and that other time period.
I suspect you'll go past that every time because we do get frozen meters during January, too.
Okay, well, we can, we'll always, we'll put more money in the budget this year again.
Yes.
Okay, anybody have a problem with this?
I don't have a problem. I just wanted to point out that, you know, a lot of people think that when we are spending money for a semi-capital item at a time that the budget is tight, they need to be advised or at least remember that this is the water fund. It's a proprietary fund. The money that's generated in it needs to stay in it and be used for items in that fund only. So, it's not like we can use this for police or fire.
Yeah.
It is something that has to be used for water or sewer.
Okay. Sherry, Kent, anybody?
Thank you.
They said 40 percent was the rate of about what had been already replaced. Okay, now, I am also going on to finance -- oh, do you have any miscellaneous under utilities that I missed?
I don't see.
I do not.
Nope.
Thank you, everything's moving right along, I guess. Finance and Personnel Committee. The 2010 budget is currently in perhaps a holding pattern. I've been working a bit with Debbie, looking at some sources of revenue, maybe don't have any, maybe we will. I expect in the next week or two, we will be starting on it. There are certainly some issues to be, to be looked at in the future. But the second item in Finance and Personnel, actually, I will, is under miscellaneous, and I will turn it over to my colleague, Sherri.
Thank you, Member Bain. I received an email today from Fire Chief Troxel regarding the resignation of Captain Munn that was effective on October 22. And Chief Troxel says that Captain Munn was a valuable part of the Fire Department's management team. He was Shift Two's captain and was responsible for many duties beyond day-to-day shift operations. And then, he encloses a copy of the captain's duties as an attachment that I'll get to. He goes on to say that the department has three 24-hour duty shifts. Each shift has a shift captain, which is in charge of the shift, and in the absence of the chief, is in charge of the department. The captains are required to complete hundreds of hours of upper-level management, advanced firefighting, advanced rescue, national incident management system, weapons of mass detection, arson investigation, and many other advanced training courses. He says, and I happen to agree, that the position is critical to the basic operations of the department and needs to be filled by promotion as soon as possible. Captain Munn was the maintenance captain, and his duties included maintain Athens Fire Department vehicle maintenance scheduling, schedule and maintain files, pump, hose, and ladder tests. In parentheses, schedule ladder cleaning and maintenance, maintain vehicle logs, monthly truck check-off sheets, upgrade and maintain first aid kits and supplies, order supplies slash parts for stations and vehicles, station maintenance schedule, maintain and update vehicle slash trailers inventory list, maintain and update Firehouse software, run monthly backup for Firehouse, Fire Department's computer contact, send monthly Firehouse, run reports to state, schedule and post stations and vehicle maintenance. So, even though we, of course, right now have a soft hiring freeze, I believe it's critical that we replace Captain Munn. Anybody?
I agree.
So, why don't we talk about the procedure that the administration has proposed to do this?
Okay. Would the administration like to explain that?
It's done by test. Lieutenants have to test. They have to have at least two, it's my understanding, at least two, if not three, will be testing for that position. As this plays out, it'll be sometime in the future, then that's going to leave a lieutenant open and we'll just have to cross each bridge as we get to. Right now, we'd like to be able to go forward with the testing, the lieutenants for the captain position.
Okay, so that's the pool. I never, we haven't had one of these for a while.
Right, and if no lieutenants wanted to test, it would go to the firefighters, I mean firefighters. But it's my understanding from the chief that there are at least two lieutenants that want to test for captain.
Okay. Anybody have a question about that? Okay, so, I, we haven't taken a formal vote, but it looks like there are a lot of miscellaneous going on.
Okay.
So, we'll get forward with this.
Does that mean as a --
Can we get back to budget for just a minute? I apologize for being late, but as you know, traffic is quite tied up out there.
That was tough.
So, anyway, I did bring my report. I'm sorry I didn't get this sent out ahead of time, but I have typed your report. Let me go ahead and hand these out.
Well, she's doing, oh, Anna Heck is doing that. Mayor, she, Chris is going to do the bus.
Okay.
Okay. So, she, the other Chris.
She has a call.
Chris.
We're not there yet, are we?
No, I just wanted you to know why I'm not talking about it, is because Chris is --
Okay.
Your name's, you say it's Jim Sanz, it says it, yeah. You're Jim Sanz.
Anyway, this report in writing is mostly what I went over last week. If you have any other questions, feel free to call or email me. And, of course, the budget talks will be ongoing for the next few weeks. The one thing I did want to talk about is the last page that I attached to this. I gave you some other handouts last week, but this one, you look at the far-right column, and I don't know if all of you have seen these printouts before. This is from our income tax department. And the percentages on the far-right show the change from last year to this year. And under August, we were up 7.9 percent in our income tax revenue. As of September, we were only up 6.3 percent, and I expect that to continue to go down as we discussed for the --
Buyouts.
Buyouts, delay footsies and things like that. And so, that's just something to follow and see where, where we're going with that and where we'll be. So, do I have any questions about that page?
And at this point, you're speculating that we'll, next year would be flat?
Pretty flat.
In terms of revenue?
As I wrote up, and I don't know if I mentioned it last week either, but I don't know of very many major construction projects going on around the city, you know, aside from city projects, which involve a lot of outside construction workers, developers, et cetera. And that also is, is helpful. But aside from our city projects, I don't think there's much new going on to help the income tax.
Well, we do have some apartment, you know, being on the planning commission, I see we have, we just did finish a Title 41 site review for one residential apartment complex. At least two more on the plate right now, as far as I can tell, and we'll see.
That's always good.
Yeah, but those are small, but, you know, the economy being what it is, the next one, of course, will be the next 50, O dots 50 out there.
We, we are getting some income tax from workers on improvements on 50, but it's not anywhere near what we thought it might be. Most of that is not within the city limits.
And we hope for the university healthcare building on Columbus eventually to kick in, too.
That would be the big project that, that helps, things like Ulster Clinic, yeah, that. You know, those are the projects that really make a difference.
We'll see how that shapes up.
Yeah, be good.
So, let's start your plan for 2010. Second item in it.
Oh, I guess one other thing I want to let you know, really everyone, as you start looking at your timeline and what you want to discuss is, I think tomorrow, we'll have all the, on the expenditure side. We also, really at the end of October, will have more specific figures. We've, we've put together figures for revenue, but we'd like to go through them again and, you know, try to be as accurate as possible, and then also give you expenditures for the personal services. And since that's the major chunk of any budget, and, and then that gives you a good place to go from for everything else.
And Ray, I have some information about the TC 200s to 600s, where they stand now. Basically, it looked like a compilation of the FinX system.
Right, yeah. So, the department heads and the administration can work with them for their budgets. But, you know, we just got two new contracts signed with pay increases, and so all those calculations, you know, we're just now doing those and for next year. But I think those will be done tomorrow, and so we're just moving along.
Okay, and part of the budget for next year, of course, is that we have that discussion about entering to contract for energy efficiency. And that, you know, will be a series of, you know, RFP to put out for the city buildings to do that. At the same time, I know we'll probably try setting aside some money for the parking garage, get some fixes on that, small ones, not to go into debt. So, that will be part of the budget next year, too. I'll be putting some money aside for that, mostly for some of the spalding that goes on. And if the, you know, group like Perfection or Chevron or Seams comes through with that energy upgrade, we may want to roll that in with the idea that that, we have the money to pay that off early, if need be, if we need to, you know, to just pull less of the debt on, on that bond. So, these are the concepts there. Again, the money for the parking garage is set aside for the parking garage, so we paid off the debt last year.
We did.
We have some money in there, but it needs some work as well, as you know.
Another cycle of maintenance. Councilmember Butler, before I close.
Thank you, Member Bain. I just wanted to acknowledge, in seeing your report or your handout, that I appreciate this information regarding the community center, which you're acknowledging here, that their budget is good, and that Director Kempfattelli has done a good job of keeping costs down. Our creation program is tighter but within budget. It's, it's good to hear. I appreciate that.
That's, well, it's true. They've done a good job this year.
Sure.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Let me see some more.
Go ahead.
Yes, thanks Nancy. I just wanted to make an announcement about some grant deadlines related to energy projects. These came out last week. There's a state deadline for, this is stimulus money that has, they've just released deadlines for and guidelines. The state deadline is November 30th, and that's a $4 million pot of money that can be distributed through 26 counties that are within our size range. So, they broke the state up into three different groups. So, that's one, one deadline that's, that's come up. There's a federal one as well. This is for federal stimulus money related to energy projects, and that is a deadline of December 14th. There's invited Member Bain, other council members are welcome to come as well, Thursday at 10:00 AM in the city building. I'll be meeting with the mayor's office to take a look at these deadlines and see what types of projects we've been looking at, we could possibly put an application in for.
Okay, any others? Kent?
Thank you. Just out of curiosity, do you have vision or particular programs that those are directed towards or that you?
Well, the biggest one is the municipal solar program.
Okay.
And that would have, probably have to be a federal application, just due to the amounts of money that those different people have available.
The projects that we've already discussed?
Yeah.
Okay.
And there are a couple of other ideas that we tossed around. One was to establish an energy office with the city of Marietta, someone that would be split half-time between Marietta and ourselves. I'm not sure if we're going to go forward with that. We'll have to discuss it and see if there's, if there's interest in doing that still. What else was there, Mayor? Is there anything else?
We had other ones in the mix, revolving loan fund, of course.
Right, which doesn't seem appropriate now.
No.
This was for, this was an idea where we would have city money available for projects on city buildings for efficiency. But with the efforts that are already going into that, that doesn't seem like it would be necessary.
No.
At this time. Through, we'll see.
And then Development.
Great, I have two miscellaneous items today. The first one is an application for a revocable license renewal, which is by Deborah Daniels on 39 Hooper Street. And this is for a fence that she has. It's a 10-year renewal. And so, I will bring that up as an ordinance next week. The second is just to kind of let members of council know that a new person has been appointed to the Comprehensive Plan Advisory Committee, Ann Rubens. She lives on Maplewood. She is a lawyer who works a lot with lower-income individuals through the Southeast Ohio Legal Services. And we're quite excited because she has a lot of housing experience, so I think that it will be a valuable appointment to that committee, and that's for a three-year appointment. Right now, we're looking at benchmarks and indicators in that committee, and we'll be putting things together and presenting to council probably in a few months. We're, we're busy. So, that's all I have for this evening.
Kent has?
A brief, maybe, mentioning of a miscellaneous. I called earlier in today to speak with the mayor's office and the planning department, Mr. Logue, and we talked briefly about this past week's planning commission meeting. I just assumed that they would check in, that he might mention that to you, that we spoke. And the mayor informed me before the meeting that that was not the case because I was curious about an update pertaining to that meeting. And he acknowledged that he wasn't expecting that, so perhaps we can discuss that, that meeting from --
You're talking about the gardening?
Correct.
Okay, the recommendation that will go to council will be to move in our definition of gardening and domestic animals, which I'm a little leery of, to take it out of the conditionally prevented uses within the R1 zone and put it in as a necessary use, which doesn't require a zoning board of appeals. It's not, it's basically rewording the 1992 form of it, saying for, just for personal and not commercial. Remember, this was being pushed through to, to actually allow gardens in R1s, which technically is not allowed without a zoning board of appeals variance.
I have a whole neighborhood in my area, all totally out of compliance.
I know.
Get passed yesterday.
Same thing with my garden, but again, what, what happened, if we look back historically in 1992, we had two sections in the R1 code saying no commercial gardens under zone five acres. And when we dropped that out because we're saying how many R1s have five acres, we also took out the section of gardening for personal use as well, and just put in this, and dropped it down somehow as a conditional use. It's in, it was in 2003, I think it got, it shifted out somehow.
Taking out your own appendix, that's the problem.
Yeah, you know, sometimes that, yeah, that's true.
With a rusty knife.
Rusty knife and anesthesia or not anesthesia. I'm not sure which way it was. You were there for the pain, so you would know.
The first part, but the second part was just as bad, if not worse, for the planning commission.
So, I would suggest having a public hearing on that just to see how it mixes up.
Okay.
But I don't think it's that critical, just for the procedure. Again, it's still, remember, chicken coops haven't changed. They still can't be in any place away from, they have to be 100 feet from any lot line.
A permanent coop?
Well, that's a good question, whether it's a permanent coop or not.
Something on wheels might be.
No, no, they could talk about structure, so I think you have to go with that, you know, to somewhere.
But I think, as I say, I wasn't prepared to talk about it. I know that, that fascinating, it should be a recommendation coming towards you. I also saw in my mailbox today the liquor license for transfer for Zoe's, and I don't know who put it in my mailbox. Did you guys do it or did the police do it? Okay, I don't know. I couldn't recognize the handwriting, it was unsigned. This is that Trexing, where they can transfer a license from an over quota city to another over quota city, and that's what Zoe was asking for. And I think that's in the mix. If you did not get a copy of it, you did not.
I have not seen it, it was not in my box.
Okay, I'll get a copy to you.
Does this, where does this mean it is in the process?
There, basically, I think it looks like a public notice where you're asking for a hearing, if you want a hearing or not. You can have that choice. Again, I think it's dated 10/21, so it gives us a little bit less than a month to actually say yay or nay, or if you want a hearing. I'll shoot it to you. I don't know where it ended. I assume it came from you guys, or maybe it did.
No, it didn't. I understand also the Salam, it also requested one?
They have, I have yet, it's the letter, their request, the letter is sitting on my desk. They are asking for me to actually ask for an approval letter, and I probably will give it to them. And then, it'll go through the same process. As any liquor transfer license, transfer or new license, it goes in front of you as well as prior to the neighboring churches. But that's, that's, I was approached by them first, and I kind of, it just kind of blew them off because it's like I didn't understand and track it. Then, I had a conversation with the guy who runs Zoe's, I forget his name, Scott?
Scott Bradley.
Okay, yeah. He basically did a lot of homework and, and gave me the links to check up on it. So, I started reading about it. And philosophically, it's, it's really geared for, you know, I could see where the need is. Of course, I'm a little bit uncertain about it, but the, about if something, you know, you take, get this license and then turn it into a bar immediately. And I don't think that's their intent, and I don't think that will happen.
He has talked to me quite at length about it, and it, I don't know that you can turn it into a bar.
I think it's a different type of license, yes.
There is not a requirement that a certain percentage of income has to come from food?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
That's what keeps you from turning it into a bar.
Yeah.
And so, you know, a restaurant that, I know those without a liquor license struggle against those that do, and I understand you can also not sell it.
Mm-hmm.
So, it is a mechanism, it looks like, that the state has created for literally a restaurant to be able to serve alcohol. I understand this one came from Cleveland, much less expensive than what one would normally have to pay for, you know, in Athens to buy one.
Well, that could be an issue eventually, too, because if there's, somebody has one in safekeeping, expects it as an investment, this is subvert --
Subverting.
I'm sorry. I know, such is the market. I'm just making you aware of it. Again, and I'll, I'll get a copy to you. I don't know where it came of. I assume it came from you guys, but I guess not.
Could you, next time, since you're the trekking expert, could you possibly let us know if it's a drink, buy the drink only license, could it be changed into the full array?
Is the proper time to make a brief announcement within the meeting tonight regarding another meeting? Is there a proper time?
Well, I can't imagine a better time than under planning and development.
Okay, thank you, sir. Thank you.
Let's plan on another meeting.
I just wanted to briefly announce to the public as a reminder, the Athens Municipal Arts Commission meeting, which will be held this Wednesday, October 28th, from 5:30 to 7:00 at Arts West. And I'm also inviting and encouraging council members and other executive. This will be a meeting in which the Athens Municipal Arts Commission will hold their brief report, I guess, to the city and to the community, which is written in their bylaws. Thank you.
Anything else, Congress?
I have, I will have. Thank you.
On to the Transportation Committee, Committee Chair Chris Wensley.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have one item tonight, and that is to announce the city's interest in applying for what's called the Ohio Rural Intercity Bus Program. And it's a grant program run out of the Ohio Department of Transportation, and will have a deadline of December 11th. And the purpose of the program is to support connection between non-urbanized and large regional or national system of intercity bus service, and to support services to meet intercity travel needs of residents in non-urbanized areas, and to support the infrastructure of the bus network. There are four areas this year that the Department of Transportation is considering. One of them is an Athens to Cincinnati route via State Route 32. The other one's Worcester to Columbus. Third one is Mount Vernon to Columbus. Fourth one is Athens to Columbus.
Yes.
So, and I believe we, we do operate right now with Lakefront for the Athens to Columbus, but we're interested in the Athens to Cincinnati one as well. It's a grant with an 80, 80/20 component, so 80 percent grant, 20 percent cost share for the total costs. We would need to have a public hearing, 30 days, with 30 days' notice. That public hearing does not necessarily have to take place before that December 11th deadline. It would be nice if it could, but it doesn't have to, so.
Okay, yeah, and this is, actually, we have this in place with Lakefront already for the Athens to Columbus. For some reason, they're re-upping it when they tied in the other three new routes. It's basically for Lakefront, it's a 50 percent match for their costs. According to this funding is that Greyhound is going to give them the other 50 percent if they coordinate with Greyhound timing. That's on page three, I think. I think I gave a copy to Debbie, it was on your desk. Okay, I came up this afternoon and passed one to you.
You did?
Yes, it's on your desk.
Very long.
You had, yes, I know, your desk was a mess at the time.
Well, that's, that's part of the map.
The map, yes. I gave it to you because it was a nice color map, and I figured that you'd make copies of it, it'd be a nice color. Essentially, what, we --
We're still busted today.
We usually get some money for administration of this as well, of course, the cost of our ticket taking at the community center and time, downtime for, for Charlene or whoever administers the grant. the grant. We apply for this as a nonprofit or a government entity, apply for it, and then we put an RFP out to any company that wants to cover this. It's kind of new on me. I went to the meeting about two weeks ago and met the faces who I've been seeing emails to and letters to all the time. There are entities who'd be interested in covering this area. We could try for all four routes, which I think is a way, since two of them don't have anything to do with us, except Columbus. The Athens to Columbus one, I think, is what you want to retain if possible. The Athens to Cincinnati, I think, is worthwhile pursuing, if need be. There is stimulus money that dovetails with this for buses. They are willing to have six buses that they've gotten out of the mix, so they're talking about four routes with six buses, so each bus is, each route is going to get at least one bus. In the Athens, in the Athens-Columbus route, there's also a bus shelter in the stimulus package, too, for Hocken College as one of the stops. Again, the idea there is to link the rural sections of Ohio with the, you know, the city parts, so they can jump on a bus and Greyhound keep going, which is why Greyhound's putting a matching, because it gives them, it's one of their missions they have to do as well. But what I need is authorization to chase the grant. We could have some other city between here and Columbus or here in Cincinnati chase the same thing, if you want. That's another possibility.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? With Councilmember Bannen?
I just want to make sure that everybody's clear that Lakeside will be paying the 20% match, isn't that true?
Yes.
Yeah, so it's revenue neutral. And that's the important point in all of this, with the exception of the ticket-taking. And I'd hate to drive that long for him and take tickets. I'm glad we're not doing that one.
Well, you contract that, in theory, but that's...
I'm joking with you.
Yes.
It's 100 long miles. But the revenue neutral is important, other than my attempt at a...
We will make sure it's revenue neutral by, as I said, a component of it, we do get back from them, which is where the revenue neutral part comes in for the administration, and recreation does the tickets.
And the bus is not our problem. The bus is the Lakeside's bus, right?
Well, actually, we get the bus and then we lease it to them.
Okay. Do we have to fix it?
No. We lease it to them, and they fix it.
Okay, thank you.
Did you want to say, can I run it?
I actually was going to ask the president if I could just get a few updates to council member at the end of the committee.
Absolutely. Go on.
If there aren't any other comments or questions, that will be helpful. Move that forward.
Okay.
Service safety director.
Some are transportation-related, some are utility-related, some are just general health and safety-related. On Key Drive, the soon-to-be-named Key Drive, which is the Holzer Clinic access road, the contractor's finished excavating the portion of Key Drive between the two access points, and it's ready to begin clearing the existing road, which began today near the motel and other businesses. For Harold Avenue, AP has set a new pole, but the existing pole is to be relocated now tomorrow.
Oh.
I know I told you two weeks ago it would happen. The streamlined portion of that project is now completed. And on Curtis Street in Mulligan, the contractor has placed almost 2,000 millennial feet of new water line. So I know you're getting some breaks, but we're getting the problem repaired. I want to announce that the city code enforcement office hours have changed, and it's in effect now, that they are beginning at 7:30 in the morning, so all the citizens that want to be able to contact code can do that a half an hour early here. A quick note about swine flu. There's a possibility that we had an employee's granddaughter, who also had other health-related issues, has died related, and also just recently, while I was coming up here, an employee of our city's son now has swine flu. So everybody take all the precautions necessary in terms of infection control. Which leads us into Halloween. We are going to establish an area command in the hopes that we don't need to, but that means that we will have OU, APD, AFD, Sheriff's Office, and Department of Public Safety, which, you know, all communicating in the event that we need to have any response. And basically, to those students, I've spent quite a bit of time over the weekend, yesterday and then today, speaking with students on Oak Street, and also with the officers who were involved in the putting out the fire, that we had a couch fire, that we don't need that anymore in our city, and we're real hopeful. A lot of the students that I spoke with yesterday indicated that they were pretty dismayed that it had occurred also, so. Hopeful for a clean and safe Halloween event. I think council's done everything they can by opening up the street, not having it be a conflict anymore, and we'll have our safety forces out there to assist as needed. That's my...
Thank you, Service Safety Director. Questions?
Yeah, just got some quick Halloween question. I was hoping to do the safety patrol again. Is that happening this year?
Yes, it is, and we still need people.
Who's coordinating that?
Ron Lucas is helping organize it. Paul Logue and Scott Thompson.
Okay.
And that's meeting downstairs, front conference room. I'm not sure if you're starting at eight or not.
Is it going to be front conference or is that...
Oh, sometimes, that's right. Booking's in front conference room.
By the back.
You know, you'll be in.
Yep.
We'll find you.
Yeah, you know, big difference, right?
Don't want to go to the wrong room.
Don't say you're in the wrong place.
Rested for impersonating a council member, gets thrown in jail. He's shattered. He's running.
Right, get the word out, we can always use more, it's more than area.